Select Board to March thirteenth, twenty twenty four to order. Note, this meeting is being televised, streamed, or recorded by Board TV. If anyone in the audience is recording or videotaping, they need to acknowledge it at this time. I don't see anyone. Use of flash photography during select board meetings is prohibited. If anyone from the public wishes to access the meeting, they can do so by calling the conference line, one nine two nine, two oh five, six oh nine nine. The Zoom meeting ID is eight five four, six eight nine four, six two eight three. Password is oh four nine, six four six. The Zoom chat will not be monitored. Participants who wish to speak must raise the hand icon until the chair asks them to mute. All items within the agenda are subject to deliberation of votes. Public comment on non-agenda items. Is there anyone with a public comment on a non-agenda item? We're sticking to the topic.
Yeah, a couple times fast.
All right, marijuana workshop. Process for developing draft marijuana review procedures. I do have Brian Bertram on Zoom here. And Brian, do you want to start with just a little bit of discussion from your firm's point of view on like how we're going to include town council? Or do you want to just listen for a while?
I can very briefly just say a little bit upfront and then I can hang around and listen a little while. I think, you know, it may be wise to include us a little bit in the upfront process. And the reason is, is that, you know, the world is changing a little bit when it comes to cannabis regulation. You know, the Cannabis Control Commission issued regulations in October of two thousand twenty-three. And sort of the practical reality is, is that, one, while they issued the regulations, they didn't give us sort of a level of guidance a lot of municipalities would have liked in applying some of that. So, for example, when we talk about equity or scoring rubrics or things like that, we don't have templates. We don't have examples that we know that the commission would necessarily accept. So, we are sort of doing all of this the first time and it's going to require quite a bit of thought. And sort of the second consideration is, is that because this is all new and because there's requirements without templates, it, you know, we can check again, but to our nose, there's not really any communities who have done a lot of this either. So, you know, oftentimes when you do things like this, you know, you either go for the agency's guidance or you go to see what his past muster in other communities. And there's really not a whole lot of that out here right now on some important things. You know, we do have a model HCA, at least as a starting point for the CCC. But there's a lot of other things, you know, how we construct the scoring system, how we consider equity, how we do other things like that, where we're going to be doing some, some work. And we're going to be doing it at the same time other communities may be potentially doing it. So, it probably makes a little sense to have council involved upfront, just to help everyone sort through some of that. You know, I don't know that we need to be involved in everything and I would encourage you to, for the sake of your legal bills, that probably doesn't make sense. But, you know, just, just given the uncertain landscape, I think checking in with us from time to time makes sense. And certainly, as you all have questions and of course, as the community has questions in this process, you should feel free to send them to us. And I can't promise you that we're going to be able to give you perfect answers, but we can certainly give you the best answers that are available. And most importantly, I think we're just going to have to be very careful about managing risk and identifying the things that we do know and things that we don't know and acting accordingly. You know, in other words, at the end of the day, a lot of the trick here is just making sure that if we don't know something or we're unsure about something and we make a decision, that we understand the risks that may be involved with that. So, you know, I guess this is maybe not the best way to kick off a process like this, saying there's a whole bunch of unknowns. But it's, you know, something I think we just all need to appreciate going into it because I do understand that we may end up with some pressure to do this quickly. And it's something that we need to be a little careful about. And we may need to do a little more deliberately than some people's liking. But I just wanted to make sure that everybody understands that it's not because anyone is dragging their feet or doesn't want to do this, it's just because this is the regulatory landscape that currently confronts us in this area. So, with that, I will just sort of sit and listen and we can go from there.
One thing I did meet earlier with Brian and Averia.
Averya.
Averya.
Yes.
Dyslexic care, who's an attorney with them that specializes in a lot of this. This is one of her areas of expertise. And she offered to send us some rubrics and sample of social equity policies that they have so that we can use them as models. So, as we start thinking about things that we want examples of, then we can like ask them. So, but they will be doing that. So, Peter, you had a comment?
No, I think you answered my question. I was going to say, if they didn't have the expertise in this in their office, should we be looking at special counsel that deals with specifically this, day in and day out? I mean, because I don't want to end up having the wrong information given to us and then all of a sudden we're going down the wrong rabbit hole. So, I just want to make sure that we have the best counsel that has dealt with this, you know, so.
So, I, what I was thinking is what we might do on our next meeting or have a scheduled meeting when their counsel that's more, that's her area of expertise, when she can be here. Because she's got a lot of expertise and she's done it and she has a lot of examples and she's been studying it, so.
The only reason I ask is, and again, the way Brian was speaking, it's like, it's like he really didn't know much about this. So, I guess I want to protect the town's interest more than anything else, you know, because our names are assigned it.
Yep, no, I get that. It's, now Averya, Averya has been doing this for a number of communities. I just, just sort of wanted to emphasize that the issue is not so much that we haven't done here. It's just that the rules have changed and unfortunately, very few communities, if any, to our knowledge, have sort of, you know, navigated the new regulatory landscape. So, we can start with the old, but there's going to be some interesting and new questions that we're going to have to address as part of this process. And, you know, unfortunately, we wish the CCC would give us more, whatever they have, so.
So, so.
Mandating.
Yeah, one of the things that came up was the social equity applicants. That you can't discriminate against the social equity applicant. So, when you do your ratings, your rating system, you have to come up with a weighted system so that they. But there is still, once you set up your criteria and you know what you're judging on, then there, then you do have the ability as a select board to make your decisions based on your criteria. As long as, you know, you just don't want it to be arbitrary and capricious, so.
Or bias.
Right.
Right? And it can go both ways. You can have bias against and bias for.
Right.
So, yeah, we've got to find that healthy balance.
Okay. So, so criteria and rating standards. We can start with the criteria. I do want to talk a little bit about the HCA template and outline of steps in the process. But I want to talk about when I start getting, nailing down some of our criteria. And I put a, I put in a document that was in the packet on page seventy-three. It talked about minimum required documentation and then it talked about some comparative criteria. I didn't put any criteria in for how we would rate or what are. I just wanted to agree first of all, and these are topics that we want to talk about and then we can talk about how we'll rate them. So, for location, the minimum required documentation, specific location and documentation of the legal agreement for the location and documentation that the proposed location is in the MOD. I thought those were minimum things that we had to have. Is there anything else that you guys think? These are, these are not.
These are general because we're not ready to clarify what legal agreement is.
Right, right. So, and that, and that, how we document and say exactly what that is, is I think one of those things that we get from town council, like.
Right.
In terms of what exactly.
What we list, yeah, as, as, as legal.
This isn't the specific wording. This is just the kind of the topics. So, the numbering, I put numbers in this, it numbered it the way it wanted. But I wanted to have numbers and go, we could say refer to three or something. So, in comparative for, for location, number three is does not, but existing school property, recreational fields or community locations where youth congregate. This is a comparative criteria. It's not a knockout. It's a, you get more points for not abutting, but you might get less points if you do a butt. But it's not a knockout criteria. And it seemed to me that a lot of people were interested in that and concerned about that. The letter that went to the AG talked about that.
Yeah.
So.
So, if I can.
Yeah.
Do we want to have a butt or do we want to have within a certain distance or proximity? Because a butting is setting it to one specific, you know what I mean?
Yeah, well, so, so there are a couple situations in the MODs where properties identified, a but, school property. They, they meet the minimum distance from a school building, the way it's measured. So, if you get into measurements, you're going to have to talk about how you're going to measure and where you're, how you're going to determine proximity. So, I wasn't too concerned about the proximity. I was more concerned about the butting because you have the Keith Field location and you have the school property. There's some properties on MacArthur Boulevard that are but. So, if you had, for example, someone that wanted to go into the Glass Place next to Keith Field and they said, yes, we have but school property, but this is how we're going to, I mean, recreational property, but this is what we're going to do to mitigate that.
Right.
Then you could give them, you know, some sort of win points or something as opposed to.
Who might be advantageous, but not as highly advantageous or, you know.
Yeah.
That's why I'm just wondering.
I mean, if you want to say proximity, I just felt.
I think a but is a strong, sorry.
Yeah, you're, you're going to give your take on it per se anyways. I, I think a but does take out the guesswork, but it does leave out, you know, what's to say, you know, the property they're, they're going to here and then there's a small sliver of property next to it.
Right.
And then the school. So, it's, it's still within a tight proximity. It only has a sliver of land between it, but I, I just, I want to make sure that we.
Yeah. Go ahead.
But I think if, yeah, if you use the word proximity, then as a, as a basis, we could almost rule out a lot of, of the MOD areas.
I agree.
So, I think the word a but is.
A but is specific. That's all I'm saying.
It's more specific. And, and more quantitative, quantitative to translate quantitatively.
And it's easier to address.
And then proximity, what, hundred yards, twenty yards, three hundred yards?
A but takes out all of that questioning, which is good.
Yeah.
But may not cover everything that you wanted to. So, you know, I just want to make everyone aware that when you, you specify like you know, when you get very specific, it, it sometimes will leave other things out of it, which isn't the end of the world. But as long as we're all aware of it.
So, we go, or we want to?
No, I.
Yeah.
Okay, with the but. Melissa, you're going to have to, you're going to have to like just pipe up if you want to say something. Okay? Highest rated applicant in the specific MOD. This. I, I don't know how we can do that as a criteria, except when we get to our final rating. I kind of see this process as an initial screening, doing ratings, then deciding who we're going to interview and then deciding who we're going to do HCAs. That criteria might be in your final analysis of like when we get to deciding on who's going to, we're going to do HCAs with.
Because I didn't quite understand it at first, but now that you explain it and it's not.
Yeah.
It's not necessarily a comparative criteria with respects to step two after the application process, right? At the initial application process. But it may be advantageous to have it if we have a situation where we have five highly advantageous individuals, you know.
Right.
Applicants and we have to narrow it down to three.
Yeah. So, and I don't know how to actually do that until we get into the rating. It was just a thought I had that we have to, if we have to tell people how we're going to do it, like.
Yeah.
We're not going to say we like these people.
In the event that, right, right, right.
And that's where it needs to be specific.
Most of the location issues I felt were going to be defined in the planning board review. And as long as it's in the MOD, that that, you know, it wasn't going to be that much of an issue. So, is there anything else in location that people think we should be considering comparatively or? Okay, ownership. So, I just tried to, I actually took a lot of this out of the CCA thing. So, documentation of entity, entity ownership, including executive team and experience. Six, business name. Seven, Massachusetts business identification number. Eight, articles of an organization. Nine, bylaws or business operating agreement in the cases of limited liability companies or other applicable entity structure. And ten, doing business as names. So, that's really who owns the property, who owns the business.
Right, they have to be business owners.
Right, that, this is the documenting of who the ownership is.
In the industry.
Right. And then on the comparative criteria, owner is a born resident or the owner or owners are born residents for at least three years. Documented business experience and we'll have to like come up with our ratings on that. Documented industry experience. Social equity program, I'm going to change participant to applicant. So, when that's, they meant that social equity where, those are the things where I think they've been arrested or have been served, they have, I don't know. Fifteen is SDO certified disadvantaged business enterprise. Minority women, veteran, disabled, indigenous, and LGBTQ owned. One of the things that the attorney from Brian Bertram's office said today was that those disadvantaged business enterprise thing have to be weighted less than the social equity to meet the CCA regulations. So, when we do get to our rating, we'll have to think about that. And then a certified economic empowerment applicant. So, those are all different things that are listed on the cannabis website and it's just part of our criteria. I don't know if there's anything else on business ownership that people are interested in.
Well, I think, I think a more comparative criteria for documented business experience. I think, so documented industry experience, great. But the documented business experience, I think there should be more weight if it's, if it's similar to an industry sensitive retail, like, you know, liquor. Because those, again, have these regulations, they're legal within these certain parameters as opposed to someone who owns a candy shop or ice cream shop. They have great business experience, but I think experience in those sensitive, what they call can, sensitive licensure. I don't, I don't know if that's the correct term. Should have a greater weight than, than the individual who, who perhaps.
If I may.
Yeah.
Unless that's included in industry experience.
So, does that fall in the rating process? So, if they have more specific experience in the field, does that weigh better and you get a five instead of a two?
Is a documented business experience going to be a length of time, related industry and show profitability? In other words, have been successful as opposed to failed? So, how we determine those criteria, I, I think it could go either way. Either this, you could put it under documented industry experience in the industry or in a sense, you know, other sense of.
Sensitive community retail.
Yeah, you could kind of put it in either one.
Yeah.
So, the, when it comes to the rating criteria, I want to get some of the rubrics that they've, the examples that they have so we can start thinking about what exactly our comparatives would be. So, anything else on ownership?
Can we go back to location for a second?
Yeah.
Number three, you know, that's not about existing school property, rec field, community location where youth congregate when twenty, no, forty eight sixty-seven? I don't know, I had to blow out the number. The buffer zone, buffer zone distance of five hundred feet shall be measured in a straight line from the geometric center of the medical marijuana or adult use retail building to the geometric center of the nearest school entrance. Unless there's an impassable barrier within those five hundred feet. In these cases, the buffer zone distance shall be measured along the center of the shortest publicly accessible pedestrian gravel path area. But my point is, is the bylaw that, that's here gives you five hundred feet. And then you're going to, you know, so they're only doing what they're required to do. And I thought I heard you say that with this comparative on number three, you may not be penalized if you are near, near a school, but if.
So, you're still the zoning requires.
Yeah, but, but the buffer, he conforms with the buffer and, you know, you know, it's not, why should he be penalized if he's doing what the bylaw says?
But that's not what the purpose of the comparative criteria is for.
I don't know, I just feel like.
Because they'll, they have to go to planning board and if the building is, you know.
Yeah, when they go in, when they, when they file for site plan review, sure. I just feel like that the way that's written, you're going after one individual who has property that possibly a but.
It's not, it's not.
It's.
It's not a knockout criteria.
Yeah, but it's just, it doesn't look, it doesn't smell like it's being in there right there.
Yeah, but we also shan't go, can't show bias to one individual. That's why the AG got the letter they got. So, we have to be, it has to be equitable for all. So, this is just a comparative. It gives someone who might have a piece of property that doesn't abut and is more desirable. They might get the four out of five. But in other areas, maybe they're only getting twos because they don't have a sound business plan or they don't have. So, this is just one of several comparative criteria.
So, you make it up in other things.
And you make it up in other things.
So, you, you abut school property, but you're a born resident and a women-owned business and, you know.
You have a business plan and you have.
Everybody has different things that they offer. It's not pointed at anybody in particular.
They don't have to be shot down just because they're within the.
Right.
Right, right.
It's a rating criteria of many.
And if they submit something with, like you said earlier, Mary Jane, that has, you know, mitigating factors because they understand that sensitivity and, you know.
Okay.
Because especially in the areas where it's site plan review and it's not, if it's site plan review, it's not a special permit.
Yeah.
So, so there can't be anything that in the planning board review that requires fencing or screening to land that abuts ball fields. So, you know, just because it's the building. Listen, the people wrote to the Attorney General's office.
We have to address it.
And there are people that are concerned about it. And we've had letters about it as select board. And if we don't address the concerns of those people as well as the rights of everyone. So, if you have a criteria that's comparative, not required, then it just becomes part of the criteria. And if you don't agree with it, then just say, I don't agree with it and then we'll go through with it.
And has Brian, who did you, has Brian or Marlene heard back from the AG? Are they going to ask for another extension of, because the thirty day extension is just about up.
Tomorrow.
I have not heard from the AG.
I haven't heard anything further at this point. So, I typically say that no news is good news. We're not, not getting previewed any problems, so that's good.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And, and do you want to go back and discuss, I mean, does the board want to take a position on whether it should be included or not? Or do you want to?
I know, we haven't heard from Melissa and she's. It makes sense to be concerned about that, obviously, but I, I don't think it's so specific that it kicks somebody out permanently.
Right.
It just changes their scoring. So, I'm okay with that. It gives them the opportunity to make it up on the other end if, if they can. It's, it's just a criteria. It's only one small piece.
Yeah, so we'll keep going then. All right, so then let's talk about business plan. Required is a description of the business operation, including type of operation, source of product, marketing plans, future plans for expansion or size or product offering. Eighteen is size of lot and the size of the building. Nineteen is proposed plan conceptual design for the store, including elevation, plot plan, including store parking and traffic plan. Twenty is proposed hours of operation. And twenty-one is documentation of funding sources available, pro forma projection for the first year of operation, including working capital required and credit lines available for cash flow. Any comments on any of those?
Not for the minimum requirements.
Yeah. I mean, and that just gives us an idea of where the business is and whether they have adequate funding. It's really interesting to me that medical. It's really interesting to me that medical, medical treatment centers have very large requirements from the Cannabis Commission on the amount of cash that they have available and the regular marijuana retailers have none. I mean, there's a distinct difference in in the money part of it, which I found really interesting. Is there anything else for the business plan that we think would be? One of the things that I'm not exactly sure where the community outreach meeting is gonna go in this process. This might be a place where we might want to have their community business plan, so they just tell us what that is.
Yeah, I've made a note, community relations. I just put.
Yeah, so the outreach, they have to have an outreach meeting and there's certain things under the Cannabis Control Commission where it has to be six months before. They can kind of choose or we can kind of choose how we want that to be in the process. But what their plan would be and we might in our process end up saying some things about community outreach. So I think we might want to put that their community outreach meeting plan. And apparently these are less.
As a minimum?
Yeah, just to give us a plan.
As a minimum requirement, not as a comparative criteria.
Yeah. Comparative criteria and then you could have it as the plan, providing the plan is minimum and then comparative, you could have something more about that. But so comparative criteria, I was kind of getting to some of the employment plan includes management by born residents, commitment to hiring born residents and the annual reporting of the number of employees who are born residents. One of the things that we can do as a board is set a license, create a license for a marijuana marijuana establishment. In which case we would charge an annual fee for the establishment. And then that would be the time when they would do all this reporting at their annual, like we have six employees or whatever and that's, that would be part of that renewal. Employment plan includes commitment to hiring diversity applicants, minority women, veterans, disabled veterans in LGBTQ and annual reporting of the number of diversity employees. Business plan includes operation at startup or future operation as a medical treatment center. We talked about this as being a possible criteria for adding points. Business plan demonstrate adequate financing to support operations. Business plan supports the goals of the local comprehensive plan for job creation, stable business, local ownership and employment. And twenty seven business plan includes sustainability and green energy initiatives. And if you want to do something comparative on the outreach meeting, that's assuming, that would be one of the later criterias, I think. Because we're not gonna have had that yet or unless you want to make it as a, the plan is.
The outreach would be later on if they, they're accepted, right?
Yeah, I'm I'm, I'm not sure when the outreach meeting is. We can talk about that.
I don't know what the timeline is for the, for their like, for the application process at the state required. So I don't know where in the, I'm gonna assume it has to happen, obviously, to complete the application.
There's really conflicting information because the community outreach meeting, this is from the Cannabis Control Commission guidance. The outreach meeting be held prior to finalizing the host community agreement because the meeting is intended to help inform the host, the host community applicant agreement process. Each applicant must conduct a community outreach meeting that complies with the following. So and then there's, the meeting must be conducted six months prior to submitting the license application. That's to the CCC, yeah. Notice of the meeting has to be published in the newspaper, at least fourteen days before, filed with the town clerk. Mail to all abutters and residents within three hundred feet of the proposed address, at least seven calendar days before. So anyone that's in a butter. I kind of thought that what we might, when we send out our RFP process, when we send it out, I think we should have all sort of a dates all set up in that process. And then we would just maybe then say notify applicants that they're gonna be interviewed by us, that they've reached, you know, whatever number we decide to interview. And then and then they might want to set up their community outreach meetings because probably before we sign the HCA, we'd want to have the documentation that they'd had it. So we can kind of be more specific about that in process. Is there anything else? I mean, anything else you want to evaluate in terms of business?
I like the employment plan piece of it, but should we also for comparative criteria, take a look at any within that plan, if they have a training program to make sure that employees are compliant, right? Regulatory compliance.
Right.
Maybe they have manuals or policies already in place because they're veteran industry business owners. I think, you know, of employment, that might be something we want to take a look at. And I think too, and maybe this is doesn't fall in our purview, maybe this is more planning board, but you know, if we look at the character, like I I think because for me, looking at the character of the building and how it fits in within the the neighborhood business or otherwise in the business community, I think also adds value.
So development plan, property development plan?
Yeah, well, yeah, I mean, it does, it does show here, it does, you did say conceptual design.
Yep.
And, you know, you can quickly put up a box.
Block in the middle of the.
Right, right. So that's within our purview, if that's a comparative and not comparative criteria that might be valuable.
Isn't that part of the comprehensive plan?
True.
But we could add it as a cri, I mean, I just.
As a comparative criteria.
Job creation, stable business, local ownership and employment and the conception, the design of the business fits into the.
Local.
Yeah, well, it it fits into the character, the character of the neighborhood or even the overall town character, right?
Yep.
I mean, we don't have very many cinder block buildings in the town of Born.
Actually, we do. There's a bunch of houses that came from the base.
Really? Where'd they go?
Claypon Road. There's a whole bunch of concrete houses.
Oh, yeah.
On Claypon?
Yeah.
Here in Buzz's Bay as well.
They just have shingles and siding over them. Fun fact.
Well, okay, but that's what I mean, right? If it was just a cinder block.
So.
Painted.
I can just real quick.
Yeah.
You know, I I think a lot of the times, Sue, you have to remember with these buildings, if we're talking about, you know, they don't, they they're not often beautiful. A lot of them are very discreet and you drive by and not even know they're there in many cases and they're very, you know, they fit in almost to a point you don't know they're even present, right? In some cases. So, you know, I don't know if if.
Well, that's the only idea.
I think it says it all already in there. You know, we are going to be looking at their proposed plan conceptual design for the store, including elevation plot plan, including store parking and traffic plan. So I don't know. I mean, I guess we could add it or reword it, but I think, you know, technically some of these places are very, are very low key, just.
Right, because they.
From what I've seen.
Right, because they do, they do keep within the character of their surroundings. Yeah.
I mean, maybe we leave that to, I mean, so in the areas around MacArthur Boulevard in that section, it's site plan approval. So that they, I don't think they have discretion there, but in the special permit areas, they do have discretion. So and if it's MacArthur Boulevard, you know.
Right, but it, but if you look at as a comparative criteria, that could, that can be a bonus. That can be, we have more weight than if you.
Do you think it's, I mean, do we want to wait that in the decision?
I don't, I'm throwing it out there.
Or leave it to the planning board?
I'm throwing it out there. That's why I said, or is it in the purview of the planning board?
Leave it to the planning board. I think that stays within the planning board, to be honest with you. I mean, we could still add it in here and but I just.
Okay.
I I think that's more the planning board than that.
So I do agree, I do agree with the adding in the the training plan, the business plan includes trade, a training program. And the business plan includes manuals or policies, whatever. All right, we got our business plan?
Yeah.
And then I did for safety and security plan. So in their minimum requirement that they draft a security plan. Then a lot of times when you do an RFP, there's something in there where you, they sign and say they they agree to do this. An agreement to work directly with the born police to develop the final security plan and agreement to have the periodic reviews with the born police as in accordance with the final security plan. I leave, I think the security plan's up to the police. I don't really want to make decisions based on that. I just want to know that they're gonna have one and that they're gonna work with the police and satisfy the police department.
Well, if they give us a draft security plan in the, in the.
Yeah, minimum requirement.
That would, that would give us, they allow, you know, we would be able to send it to the police department and have them send us a recommendation in between the next step.
So do we want any comparative criteria? I just felt it was comparative criteria.
We want to know that you put thought into it and and based on your lot, where you're going, you've made, you know, a true assessment of what you need to do for a security plan. I think it's at least a draft.
Yeah, I think maybe the comparative criteria is that, you know, I don't know, the recommendation of the the police chief just as a checkbox. Or or is it an area where someone could really have a very thorough security plan that even though the police doesn't have a problem with it, is better than another one because maybe they have, you know, I don't know, a specific type of theft prevention plan or they have, you know, they show in the narrative that there's sufficient commitment to public safety or I I don't know, within that plan, I don't know.
I think it stays as a minimum requirement. There's, I don't think there's comparison there per se.
I don't think there's a comparison in
I mean, there could be.
In, if we set up a license, like a marijuana license that they're after, after we get an HCA with them, right? Then they're eligible to apply for the license and pay the license fee. And a license, like any other license, has a routing slip and so be the police chief signs off on the security plan, fire department signs on this and that's really like any other business. These are the criteria that you have to meet. It's not part of deciding whether you're there, you just have to meet those criteria. So.
And I know the security plans, I mean, they're tight anyway.
Yeah. I mean, I I think to me, we're looking, when we talked about this at our last meeting, we were looking for minimizing litigation risk, right? And then having certain things that we wanted. We want born residents, we want born employees. I mean, we want to have a good plan and a business that looks like it's going to be viable and a lot, the rest of it is it's gonna be, you know, I think when we get their documentation and we get their request, we'll be able to evaluate them. So.
Right.
On those plans and then we'll meet with them. So is there anything else? I mean, we may come up with more things, but I mean, are this our, is this our beginning criteria that we're gonna want to start developing some rubrics on? Okay.
I think based on what we had, the list we had made last meeting, you know, for minimum, I think it's a, I think it's, it hits the major areas that we'd like to see in applicants.
I can sort of update this with what comments that we've had. And then we can start working a little bit more on the criteria. I really want to have I mean, unless people want to start working on like how they would rate some of this criteria or do you want to get rubrics first?
I think rubrics, I like working with, like formulating the rubric now that you have additional information. And then we can, you know, whatever, however that rubric looks, the bullet points of inside the rubric and then take a look at how best to score.
Right. And that they, the rubrics that they have are like prior to the new regulations, so they may need some adjustment for social equity.
Just have to adjust them a little bit, yeah.
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 That's good. So anyone from the public have any comments? Yeah?
Steve Drony Mo Beach, comparative criteria for under location says highest rated applicant in the specific MOD. I'm not sure what that means because we only have one MOD for the, for the town.
Well, the.
If it was a comparative.
In the zoning, in the zoning, they talk about the MacArthur Boulevard MOD, the Sagmorm MOD, the downtown MOD. Because some of those, and I'm thinking about this. I'm thinking about when they said like special permit is in three of those MODs, but the MacArthur Boulevard is site plan only. Those were, that's what I was thinking and that's, as we we said, it's, this is more like, I don't know, suppose we had ten applicants, okay? And we go through the initial screening and we come with with five of them that we think are like worth we're having further interviewing, you know, some of them just aren't going to make the cut, maybe eight of them. I don't know how. So then you're down to your five and when then, you know, if we like all five of them, right? We have to decide which three we're gonna do, we're gonna enter into HCAs with. That's when this criteria would come in.
Okay.
That's, that's what I'm saying, that's what, and it it would be later in the process and really when we're, when we're like really trying to figure out who we're to cut the final cut, like it would be, well, this one is, you know, maybe we have three in this MOD and one in each of the others and we want to like separate them out, like.
Okay, and and that makes sense. What, what, when, when we were discussing, when you were discussing this initially, what, what I was thinking about is the planning board, when they looked at, when they did this all this past summer, they had looked at, should we put a net, like a dispensary in this section, this section of town and this section? And they said, wait a minute, we're just gonna do an overlay district and they eliminated ninety-five percent of the town and they said, okay, anywhere in this overlay, the three can go. They didn't, because that was, that, there was, that was a, a lot of, there was a lot of discussion around, should we spread them out around town? And it it just got kind of convoluted there. So that's why I was just asking for clarification.
And I tried to explain, I mean, when I put it in, I was really thinking about it more as a final, like, like, you know, if we go through this, if, and I I had this process where we open the application period for like, say, thirty days. We close it, we have an initial review by staff who's gonna look through to make sure that all these minimum requirements are in there. Then we're gonna have a meeting in the select board and the select board's gonna look at the comparative criteria. Then we're gonna notify applicants that you, we're gonna invite you in for an interview so that you can make a presentation to the select board. And then that would be a time for them to start considering whether they want to start having their community outreach meetings. They're gonna interview the board, maybe they want to have their community outreach meetings. So then we have the interviews with the applicants and then we have to decide who we're gonna enter into HCAs with. And if we have five or six or seven that are worthwhile, we're gonna have to find a way to decide which ones we're gonna finally.
Well, wouldn't that just be, so you have, you have numerical criteria?
Right.
Because remember we talked about how you got to put a number on this. You can't just be like, oh, it's advantageous or not.
No, I, I understand.
So you, you, to piggyback on what you said, so you have five people present to the board, qualified or or otherwise, you're gonna score them. So you're gonna get a hundred, ninety-five, eighty-seven, sixty-four, forty-four. Wouldn't you just take the top three scorers and say, these are the the people that.
We might.
You know, who have, obviously, under our criteria, they're the best fit for the town. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, it's who's the best partner for the town of Born. A lot of the stuff you're going over here, the, it's, the state's already gonna do it.
Right.
Like the security plan and stuff like that. That's, that's all done at the state level indirectly with the police. You don't, you basically don't want to put your security plan out there for the public. I mean, that's, that's not something that.
That's why I tried to say it's not comparative.
So I, I think, I think what you've done here, you know, it's, it's very encouraging. It's, it's, a lot of it is right on point and everything in the process you've just indicated. I I think that's a great process and I think that's ultimately the way you're gonna get the three best, you know. I, I think that's a great process, and I think that's ultimately the way you're gonna get the three best, uh, you know, candidates, get licenses for the three best.
So, I, I think that your comments were well taken, and I think for this number four thing, I may take it out of the comparative, except for somehow put it as like a later thing if necessary, but 'cause I'm not sure I care whether there's three in one district and none in the others, or whether there's, I don't, I don't know if that matters to me.
It's gonna be, when you look at a business plan and you look at traffic counts and demographics and things like that, you know, it's gonna be clear that some locations are superior than other locations, and some of those locations might be fairly close to one another. MacArthur Boulevard is the economic engine of the town, you know? Okay, thank you.
Thanks. And I don't know, I mean, that comes to the comparative part of the traffic plan and all that. I mean
Parking.
Wait, just, do you have a comment?
Oh, sorry.
We have to have the, you can stay there, it's just
Just to what, what Steve said, I think it's important to keep it in place, 'cause I don't think this is gonna happen, but crazier things have happened where we get
Four seventy-fives or something?
Three one hundreds, and they're all in, you know, or we get three one hundreds and they're everywhere. We get four one hundreds, and, you know, the best fit might be
They're all in the same place.
They're all in the same place. It could. I'm not saying it will, and it probably, the chances of it, probably slim to none, right?
Yeah, so it could be
We'll say eighty, twenty.
And it needs to be a little bit, we're gonna have to refine the wording a little bit, so. And we don't really have anything for comparative in terms of, um, in terms of the location. We didn't really put that in as a comparative. And maybe we need to, in terms of, uh
Are you talking about the, the, um, the business plan? Is that section? Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah, is it in the business plan?
The size of the lot, building, the conceptual design, is that what you're referencing?
Really, I didn't put it, there's nothing in here for, um, unless it would be part of the comprehensive plan. That kind of goes back to like fitting into the
Right, the, I was talking, referencing the character of the
The character, um.
'Cause if you're asking for a conceptual design, then how do we, how would we create a comparative criteria for asking for a conceptual design, other than the fact that they have one? But, but the comprehensive plan speaks to that, too. In the comparative criteria in that section.
Yeah, so we might have to, we might put something in.
Just clarifying. I think maybe clarifying.
The location, location is good or something, yeah. For, fits the community. Well, that is going back to fits the community, which we sort of decided to take out, but maybe that's what it is.
No, I'm just saying the character, yeah, the neighborhood. I mean, it blends in because it fits into the character of them.
Okay, could you introduce yourself and?
Sure. Hello, Board. Good afternoon. Ed Dow, Buzzards Bay. And I just have a minor point I want to bring up, um, for the residency requirement. Boston adopted one that was something to the tune of, and Mike, you might remember this, I think it was within the last five years, you needed to reside there at least three years of those years. I only say that for instances like myself. I, I was here fourteen year stretch. Bought a house in Buzzards Bay, it got tied up in probate, was fortunate enough to have a property in, in Sandwich that I could fall back to for the eighteen to twenty-four months. Now I'm back in Bourne, so, you know, it would have otherwise been a seventeen year unbroken stretch that I, I was in Sandwich for a couple of years.
Yeah, that, that's a good point, and there's some, there, um.
Thank you. And that was the only one for me.
Yeah, and I was thinking about the poor people that, like, they live in Bourne and they rent, and then they have to move to Wareham, you know, or something. You know what I mean, so?
Right. I think that's how Boston satisfied it, and it made it
Yeah, so I
Say it again, how they satisfied?
I believe, and, and Mike, you might know exactly how this is worded, but I believe it says three, within, uh, three years of the last five, you had to reside in Boston.
At least three of the last five.
At least three years, yeah.
Yes.
But I'll say of the last five.
Right.
Yeah, I'll put that in. I think that's a good comment.
Thank you.
Everybody agree?
Yeah, no, I agree.
So at least three years of the last five. That was the language.
Yeah, and they don't have to be consecutive necessarily.
Right. I, I could email it and look up exactly what it is, but that was
No, I think that clarifies enough.
We're gonna have to work on the specifics of the language. We're just trying to
At least if we have the notes, we can
That, that's a good, that's a good point. And I, I've seen it a bunch of different ways, and it is comparative, so that, you know, if it's five in the past, if five, if five in the last five, then you're, you're highly advantageous, so we can, yeah, that's good. Thank you for that comment.
Five in the last ten, that'll limit it. Thank you.
We're done.
All right, then. Yeah, so I started, um, like trying to think out the steps, like, that I had outlined before, and I tried to put like timelines into it. And then the, the opportunity to apply for a license, it comes like after you've signed the HCA, because you don't have a have a host community agreement, and then you can apply for the license, and that's where the routing through the staff and making sure all those checkboxes go, and that's where we enter the fee. Go ahead.
I would, I would also say that the license comes after any necessary special permit.
Yes. Yeah, okay, so then, then you have a planning board review, right?
So
And then you go to the Cannabis Commission for their license, right? And then you apply for the license, the final license in Bourne, or, I don't know, after the planning board, you get, I guess you go, your license application.
Planning board review and final permitting. Is that what you're requesting?
So, yeah, so after they get an HCA, then they can go to the planning board.
Yeah.
They have to wait, so then they go to the planning board.
Right, we know that.
And then, do they go to the Cannabis Control Commission for that license next, or do they go get the Bourne license next?
Can I speak to that?
Sure.
Just, just as, as it relates to the planning board, because
The process.
I was the chairman of the planning board for a while, and, and I've talked with, um, the current chairman, Dan Doucette. So, what happens with the planning board, they will accept an application for, in this case, for the, in the marijuana overlay district, for, uh, approval. In, in what the planning board has done historically in the past is, um, you know, if, if, if you have to submit, um, a border health certified septic system, they'll still take your application, start the process, but you can't get in front of them, you can't get final approval until you have all the pieces of the puzzle in place. We used to routinely get landscape plans after the fact and whatnot. So what I'm saying is, the planning board may end up taking applications, um, under the, under the marijuana overlay district zone and bylaws, but ultimately, they cannot give final approval until the HCA is in place, 'cause that is one of the conditions, so.
Actually, they, the zoning bylaw says that they can't go apply to the planning board until there's an HCA.
But it's always been, it's always been the, the policy and of, uh, the planning board to accept, uh, applications that aren't a hundred percent complete initially, and have them
Yes.
Have them supplemented down the road. And, and some of the things have to be, like, like the, the border health is the one that comes to mind. Sometimes, until you have worked the process a little bit, you don't know what you're gonna need for a septic system.
Yeah, but the HCA is, is, HCA, we're gonna use the template with a couple of minor verifications.
Right, of course.
So that, then they're gonna go, they're gonna get the HCA, then they're gonna go to the planning board. The planning board process is gonna determine all the things that they have to do. That really, that, they have to have the HCA before they go there, but the HCA is only that we've said, okay, we're gonna you can go to the planning board. I mean, you can't go to the planning board till we say.
Well, I, I think the planning board might disagree with that, though.
They may have past practice, but
Yeah.
We, we need
I mean, you could, it makes sense to do the two process, you know, concurrently, because that, you're moving them both forward. And again, the planning board's not gonna make an, an ultimate or final decision until an HCA is in place.
Right, they can't
So, they, so
Issue a final until it's in place anyways, so.
Yeah, that's right, in the zone and bylaw. They'd have no discretion in that regard. But there's, there's, there's no reason why you couldn't file, uh, an application, uh, once the AJ, AG approves the, the zone and bylaws.
I, I, I disagree.
I, I think I
According to our zoning, I, I wanna adhere to what the language is.
That the way that the zoning bylaw was written is
I have it right here. It says, it says a copy of a fully executed host community agreement as, as an application requirement. So, I think the planning board needs to be very careful.
Okay.
I mean, that's, that's pretty specific.
And that is something, all right, so that is definitely something that we need to get our town council to weigh in on, is whether the, the, and frankly, I, I don't think it makes any business sense for anyone to start that planning board process if they don't have an agreement from the board.
And we only have three.
At risk.
We, we only have three, and we're gonna make, we're gonna make an agreement with three of them anyways. So, once those three agreements are done, they're all gonna go to the planning board. So, it's not like you're gonna have ten going to the planning board, and we gotta weed out five more. That weeding out process is done at that, that point.
Right.
Are you saying, Steve, that there may be things in that planning board process that should be in the HCA? Has that been any experience? No?
No, not, no, not, not, not in the HCA, no. But, I, I mean, there's things you, you folks are talking about doing that would, like you say, well, conceptual plan with parking and lot size and all this. Well, that's all under the jurisdiction of the, the planning board as far as parking goes and everything. So you could theoretically get a conceptual plan that, as it works its way through the process
It changes.
Changes fairly, fairly dramatically.
Right.
So that's
And that's not a problem, that's, because that's not
That's just the process.
That's just part of the process.
It's, um, we just, we wanna have some sort of a plan of what, you know, conceptual plan of where they're, of the business.
I think that makes perfect sense.
And, and, um
You want one anyway.
It's not
And people are proud of them.
Yeah.
And the only thing that's gonna go in the HCA is the, the location, none of the other requirements, 'cause we're gonna use the model template, so. And then the planning board's gonna do their thing, but, um, and I'm not sure then, um, the planning board's gonna do their thing. The, it'll be up to the applicant to apply for the Bourne license and do that staffing review. It'll be up to them whether they wanna go to CCC first or us first. It doesn't, it can go either way.
Doesn't sound like it matters either way.
Yeah.
My, my concern is that they don't come to you for a license until the, until a special permit has issued, if that's necessary.
If it's necessary.
Yeah.
And the reason, the reason
Or the site plan approval.
Any final permitting.
We can't do any final
Well, okay.
We can't do the building permit.
Okay.
So, um, but
Special permitting requirement.
Yeah, I, I don't want, I, I don't think it would be beneficial to anyone if we're doing the full licensing review before the special permit has issued, and the appeal period has told.
Okay. And I, I think, so, it's gonna go to planning board, and then once the, after the, apply for a license is after the site plan or special permit approval on the, and the approval period has passed. And I don't, one of the things that we want, may want town council to weigh in on is whether, um, we recommend that the license not be done until the Cannabis Commission license is done, because of the Cannabis Commission seems to have a lot of weight in terms of security plans and other things, and if they wanna change stuff, we wanna have that finalized, and then they apply for the finalized.
To me, I would rather see them go through commission first and get that license, because it's, it's very specific, and it covers a lot of things that we don't, we don't need to cover anymore.
And, and they could utilize that time for the Cannabis Control Commission license during that appeal period from the planning board, so when they, it's gonna, that, that would overlap.
Right.
So, that sixty days that it takes Cannabis Control to issue their license would probably suck.
Just because Cannabis Control has so much criteria within it.
Yeah.
I would rather see that done first, before they get the Bourne license.
Yeah, and at that point, it's
And then at that point, for us, for our licensing, there's not much left to do.
Yeah. Okay, um.
All right.
Sure.
Ed Dow, Buzzards Bay. Uh, just a point of clarification on the CCC licensing and submittal. Prior to having a host community agreement, no applicants can apply to the CCC, just so you guys are aware. We could submit an application of intent, it's called, but that's nothing.
No, I haven't after, so, I have notified selected applicants of, of their selection and requests the signed HCA and the community outreach meeting attestation to us. And then, um, we'd have a public hearing, you know, where people, and then we would vote on, we would sign the HCA, they send, they sign the HCA that we've given them. We have a public meeting and sign it. Then it goes to the planning board, then it goes to the Cannabis, they, they've got their HCA from us, then it goes to the planning board.
It will have, okay, okay, got it.
Yeah.
And the only, uh, thing that I, that I would say is, let's say you give one of three HCAs, and then somebody fails in planning for special permit or otherwise. So you might just wanna consider
Establish a waiting list or something, yeah.
Yeah, or typically, in all the places that I've, that I've seen, it's planning board approval first, and, and then select board host community agreement, but, but that's obviously on
Yeah, no, it was written the opposite.
It's written the opposite, yeah.
Right. I think they were looking at the way to apply to the CCC, and I think that was how that language was adopted that way.
Yeah.
Okay.
So. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and how this is all gonna tie, I mean, this is very conceptual.
Right.
I, I like to write things down and do the steps, and then we can talk about the steps, and
Something in front of you.
Yeah. Okay. I'll kinda write this up and get it, um, and add that stuff. The other thing that was in our packet was the, it's the HCA template. And, um, for the most part, I think we can use the HCA template. There were a couple of things that I noted that I had questions about that this is something we're gonna wanna talk to town council about, um, 'cause they have some, um, they have some things that they, in terms of the termination clauses, that they like to include. For example, if they, if you sign this HCA and they get, um, they go to the special permit, and they don't exercise the special permit, or the special permit expires, then write to terminate. So there are certain things that they're gonna wanna add. When I looked at it, I thought that in the definitions, um, I thought we might wanna specify more specifically tied to our, um, zoning bylaw. Because we have prohibited certain establishments, so I think our HCA should probably remove from the authorized operations list things that we, we are not authorized under the zoning, and maybe to look at changing the definitions. This, um, the final HCA just says that they're gonna agree with the Cannabis Commission on the location, and I think we should have ours should have a space to fill in the specific location. And then on the generally occurring fees, um, staff needs to work on this, like what will be generally occurring, um, identify current, occurring fees, and then we need to talk about the, the license. And the board's gonna need to vote to establish a marijuana, um, license, and then we're gonna have to figure out what our annual fees for that will be, so. And those will have to have, like, set before we finalize the HCA template. Anybody else have comments about the HCA template?
We didn't really have a lot to adjust on that. We don't, yeah.
I, I mean, I think you can't mess around with it too much, and then they'll just reject it, so.
I'm just looking at it right now, trying to go through some of it. Yeah, I think, having that little extra as to the location would be good. But it's hard to
I, I mean, I think we're just gonna have them put in the location, and that's, you know, wherever it's gonna be.
So language around location, language around severance?
Yeah, termination.
Termination.
Yeah, so we'll have, yeah.
There's a section at the bottom here.
Yeah, I think there was something else, was there something else that she talked about?
You need to clot back if the special permit doesn't issue.
Yeah, yeah. So they have some specific recommendations that they, they can make on that. And I just think that they, the wording under definitions just has a lot of stuff that we don't do. So I, I think that we'll have to ask them to tailor ours to reflect our zoning in whatever way.
Right.
It is. So that's something that we'll work with town council, that'll be a town council, town council review.
MJ?
Mm-hmm.
I think another item that the board and council may need to spend some time discussing, because so many of your comparative criteria are specific to, you know, individuals, like where they live, are they women owned, are they minority owned, that you have to make sure that you have strong provisions for sale or transfer.
Okay. Okay. Discuss timing of input from town council. I think we talked about them maybe coming to our next meeting to be, so we can really have, and I'd like to have their expert person come in and sort of talk to us through some of the HCA things and the rubrics. Yeah, yeah, and she said she could, that was the other thing, she said she could give us an example, social equity policy.
Yep. I've seen, I mean, there are some exemplars out there that I've researched, but I'm sure they have some too.
Yeah, I mean. Yeah. And if that, that's their recommendation, and then if you have other examples that say it doesn't have this or it does have this, we can, we can go from there, but I think that, starting with documents that they're comfortable with, although she did say that they're not under the new thing.
The what?
The new, they're all prior to the new regulations.
New regulations.
Yeah, because no one has rubrics now for the new regulations.
Right.
But we can adjust them.
But they, yeah, well, the two workshops that we've been to, that we've zoomed.
Right.
They, they have some, so I'm sure.
Yeah.
I'm sure they're out there, because they've had to adjust them, because nothing's been grandfathered.
No. Are there any specific questions, other than we did want to get town council to weigh in on whether the HCA is required for a complete application for planning board review? And whether the planning board should not begin the application process until there's an assigned HCA? I think we need to get that answered.
So really, we just need to narrow the process now.
Yeah.
And fine tune all of those criteria.
Right, and, and how, where are we putting this all, right? That's, I mean, that, that mandatory transparency piece that's required is, it's involved.
Yes. It means that once we get everything done, we're going to have a period of time while we get everything up on the website and get everything printed and get all that.
Yeah.
You know, there, there's going to be a lag between that and that. Okay. Item six here is correspondence from Steve Strohney and the discussion of RFQ versus RFP. I think we included some of your comments into what we talked about, so you, are you? Yeah, so, or do you have anything else you want to add to what we're doing here?
Well, very quickly and very simply, Steve Strohney, is, you know, I, I thought the RFQ process would be a better process for the select board, because I think it gives you the freedom, it doesn't restrict you, like we talked about last time we were here, about the RFP, how it has to be very specific and these are the only things, and, and I think as far as from a time standpoint and a cost and expense standpoint, the RFQ is, is a much better process for you, and it can get underway sooner. And like I said, it gives you the freedom to consider a lot of the things you guys have talked about, their kind of, you know, design and stuff like that, you know, those are things that I think under an RFQ are pretty easy to talk about, but more difficult under an RFP. But that's, that's, I just thought it was a better process, so I brought it to your attention.
So, so the, and what exactly the differences between an RFI, RFQ, and RFP are sometimes finely distinguished, but usually a request for quote, an RFQ process is where.
Qualifications.
Um, wow, so, so there's RFQ that's a request for quote.
Yeah, but mine was qualifications.
Okay.
I, essentially, are you qualified, right? And initially, people are going to look qualified, and you guys are going to talk to them, interview them, dig into their paperwork, do whatever you think due diligence you need to do. So you're going to go from qualified to not qualified or qualified, and then you, the qualified people are the ones you're going to take to the, the next step, you're going to grade them as part of that process. So I, I just think it's, I mean, I think it's a straightforward, simple way of doing it, and it's going to give you the best result.
Well, we just have to make sure that whatever way we do it, it complies with the processes required under procurement.
Tinsborough has done it that way, if you, if you want to look at somebody, I think has done a pretty good job with it. Tinsborough has done it that way, and they've had good results with it.
How did they address the social equity piece?
Well, okay, that's, that's a challenge, because.
Right, and that's why the RFP process, in my opinion, might fare a little better to be able to have that back up.
Well, I think, I think, but I would say just the opposite, though, Anne Marie, I would say that with the RFQ, you can say, if we don't get a social equity candidate, do we at least have somebody that aligns with it? Is it veteran owned, is it owned by women, is it owned by people of color, things of that nature? Still give points for that. So, you know, because in a lot of communities, they didn't get social equity candidates, or if they did, the, the social equity candidates, I'm just going to be honest with you, they couldn't get to the finish line.
Oh, so that, that's another thing that attorney.
Yeah, but we don't, we can't.
Talked about, no, she, she talked about making your RF, whatever it is, she, she talked about RFP, RFI, so like, we use these acronyms and no one knows what we're talking about. The, you have to make, make sure that you have the ability not to accept, just because you get applications, not to accept them, that you have that discretion, there are certain discretionary things. The, the biggest thing that they don't know now is the social equity piece, because that this concept of not discriminating against social equity people, how that's going to end up in your weighted system. So I think when we, when we fine tune the process, and there were some examples in our packet of RFP processes, I looked at it and felt that there were a lot of things that were not going to fit into this process, and that's probably another thing that we have to go through, that RFP and say, ah, well, this doesn't apply in this process, this doesn't, so that we can sort of say, these, these are the things we're going to focus on. And I think it all, in the end, it's going to be not, it's going to be a hybrid process
Yeah.
That's suitable for our particular process, for what we're doing, for finding qualified people that fit into born and are what we want to have in our community, so.
Yeah. No, I think, I think from where we were last meeting to now, we've, we've covered a lot of ground and really narrowed the focus, and we're in a good spot, so I commend the board and Marlene on the work you guys have done. Obviously, you've done a lot and moved it in the right direction.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, we're moving it right along, okay. Their minutes of 2:21 are in the packet.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, on favor?
Roll call.
A roll call. Melissa?
Yes.
Anne Marie?
Yes.
MJ, yes, Peter?
Yes.
Jared?
Yes.
Five zero zero, okay. Future meeting schedule. I was kind of thinking that we would meet every other week at this time until, like.
Should we knock it out?
Till we get it done, yeah, go ahead.
So I, I will say, we didn't book two last time, because Liz and I both have conflicts with the 27th.
Okay.
But, I mean, that's not saying that you can't proceed, but that's why we didn't book two.
That, no, okay, so I forgot that, so, but I do want to, is, can we, is there another day in that week that we can meet? Or could we meet maybe that week?
I can meet that week, we can meet that, we can meet that day or that week earlier.
Well, what's, like, the late morning or?
Um, I mean, I have a hard, I have a hard stop by 3:00 that week.
What about you, Jared?
I won't be available before 2:30 at the earliest.
Okay.
The whole week?
Yeah.
Okay. How early did you get up?
I'm in Waltham. I'm up before 30, every day.
I'm in, I'm in.
I'm okay, anytime.
What about, so what about Thursday?
It's fine.
Would Thursday work for you?
Thursday the 28th.
I've got to check my calendar.
Thursday the 28th, I am available before 1:00 PM.
What about before our select board?
Well, we need to, we need to find an, like, is that week bad for you, like, after three? That whole week is bad for you after three?
Yes, and I'm not, I, I'm not here on Friday. Monday through Thursday is bad.
I mean, I'll be honest, if you want to do something during the day, I mean, I can always zoom in for a portion of it to see where we're at, and I can always have.
I kind of wanted to have the attorney come, though, so I'd like to have it.
So not prior to our select board meeting on Tuesday? That's not a good idea?
That's the sewer commissioners.
Oh, it's the last, the last, yeah.
It'll be sewer commissioner, yeah.
So not prior to the sewer commissioners meeting? On the 25th?
I think if it works during the day, because I, I will have capability to try and zoom in for at least a portion of the meeting.
Is there a time during the day that works for you, like?
I'll be in Waltham all day.
Okay.
Which is fine, like I said, you know. I would zoom.
If we do, I would, do you think it would be worth it to meet on the 22nd? I know this, that's the Friday before the week that we have issues, but does anybody have an issue on that Friday at all? Do you think we'd be ready for that Friday?
I don't know. Seth, you want to try for the Friday, the 22nd?
No.
How about Melissa? Melissa, you haven't piped in. What's your availability?
I'm just waiting, do you guys have the sign? I keep hoping they'll make out and sign and put it in on the day you, you talk. So Friday, I'm okay, if, if the 22nd, I, I, so far, it looks good.
What we can do on the Monday?
That can change in about 10 minutes, though, so.
The 25th?
The 25th. The 25th works.
But for Jared, it doesn't, every day, you're busy until 2:30.
That week?
Yeah.
That week. And every day, Marlene, that week, is, has, her hard stop is 3:00 PM.
Right.
So we could meet from 2:30 to 3:00 on any day that week, but other than that, we're not going to have full availability, so, and what about?
I could zoom.
What about on the, is there a, is there a hard stop 3:00 to something else? Like if we did it before the sewer commissioners at like 5:30 on that Tuesday?
I'm not going to be available after 3:00, and I'm not going to be at the sewer commissioners. Matt will be with you.
Okay. All right, so that, that answers that. Do we want to just move it to another, to the next week?
Or just, what, what daytime did you have? You had a daytime one that you were talking about.
We were talking about that day, the 27th.
During the day.
Right. Doing it at 1:00?
The 27th?
Yeah.
We better do a couple, because if you want council.
If we're having this.
If you want council to be available.
Yeah.
I can't, I mean.
Right.
I don't have their schedule.
Right, and, yeah, we definitely, we want both of them, both.
So the 27th at 1:00?
Yeah.
And you can put your earbuds in?
And we want to say the 28th at 1:00?
I'm.
Both of them?
No.
The 28th, I am booked, I'm available before 1:00. I have meetings starting at 1:00.
Recording in progress.
Okay.
Oh, good lord.
Who's recording this?
I don't know. That just came from the Zoom.
That was me getting on the other meeting, because I have to get off this meeting.
Okay.
At 4:30.
Okay.
So the 27th at 1:00?
And the 28th?
Is that the time, 27th at 1:00?
Yes.
That's one of them.
That's one of them.
And then if, if town council can't make that, let's get times he can make, and then we'll adjust it accordingly.
Yep.
Okay.
Can always do it three weeks.
Yeah, that sounds good. And then, but after that, I was thinking that we just try to meet like 4:10, 4:24, 5:08, 5:22, we just keep hammering it out, and then we'll just plan the 3:00, and then if we have to adjust it, we will. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Any discussions? Seeing none? Roll call vote, Melissa?
Yes.
Emery?
Yes.
MJ?
Yes.
Peter, yes?
Jared?
Yes.
Five zero zero. Thank you.